In my five terms I've ever been in front of the board, so it's good to be with you. Briefly, members, as we know, as elected officials, elected officials come and go. And in my ten years in the General Assembly, I've had friends leave, some are quickly forgotten, some leave a legacy. And you have a board member retiring now that is leaving a legacy. Eight years of incredible servant leadership that has impacted families that have rep-- she's represented children fantastically, she's represented parents, and she led during a global pandemic which separated Knox County schools from all their other metro areas. So for that reason, on behalf of the state of Tennessee, I'm here to read a proclamation that we've prepared in her honor. So if you'll bear with me for just a second. Whereas it is fitting that we should sp-- they're the-- whereas it is fitting that we should specially recognize those estimable public servants who have dedicated themselves to improving the educational experiences of the children of Tennessee. Whereas Susan Horn is one such laudable individual who has served with probity-- you can look that up, I had two as well-- is a member of the Knox County Board of Education, is now taking her retirement from this esteemed body. Ms. Horn was first elected to Knox County Board of Education in August of 2016, was reelected to a second term in August of 2020, having served as vice chair from September 2018 through August of 2019, and completing two terms as chair from September of 2019 through August of 2021. Whereas her time as chair will always be remembered for how well she led Knox County schools through the global pandemic, advocacy-- And thank you to everyone who's in attendance tonight. We just ask that you be respectful and courteous at all times and be mindful that sound does carry in this room. Board members, agenda items 6C, 21, and 10A were withdrawn prior to our work session, and you did receive an email earlier today regarding the withdrawal of item 9E. Also, the caption on Agenda Item 9F has been corrected to reflect the maximum cost of $25,000. So we did have several changes. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. It is my privilege tonight, we do have the special recognition of our outgoing board members, as the terms of three of our current board members are coming to a close on August 31. And tonight will be their final regular session meeting for Ms. Owen, Mr. Watson, and Ms. Horn. We want to take the opportunity to express our deepest appreciation and recognize their service to Knox County schools and to the entire Knox County community. District 2 Board Member Jennifer Owen has served on the Board since September 2016. Anyone who knows Ms. Owen knows she cares deeply about public education. As a former long-term teacher and two-term board member, her passion for our schools, education, students, and community is apparent and commendable. Ms. Owen has served multiple years as a Certified SIC Bank Trustee, as well as a member of the Board's Ethics, Special Question, and Strategic Plan Committees. She also served as the Board's Representative to the Coalition of Large School Systems, the Tennessee Legislative Network, and Teacher Supply Depot. Please help me express our sincerest appreciation to Ms. Owen for her service to our students, school, staff, and community. District 3 Board Member Dana Watson has served on the Board since September 2020. I know that was an interesting time when you came on the Board. In addition to Mr. Watson's Board service, he is co-founder and Executive Director of Restoration House, serving single mothers and children, and also participates in United Ways Bright Steps Advisory Board. Mr. Watson has served as the Board's Representative on the Preschool Advisory Committee, the Disparities and Educational Outcome Steering Committee, and the Coordinated School Health Council. He also served on the Board's Joint Education, Ethics, and Naming Facilities Committee. Please join me in expressing appreciation to Mr. Watson for his dedication to our schools, children, family, and community. District 5 Board Member Susan Horn has served on the Board since September 2016. In addition to her duties as an elected board member, she serves as the Women's Ministry Director at Christ Covenant Presbyterian Church. She served as Board Chair for two consecutive years from September 2019 through August 2021. Again, two very interesting times for you to serve. Her leadership during the global pandemic was invaluable to Knox County schools and the Knox County community. Ms. Horn has served on the Board's Ethics, Joint Education, Strategic Plan, Student Representative Selection, and Superintendent Search Committees, and she served as Committee Chair in each of those roles. She also represented the Board at the Teacher Supply Depot, the PTA Clothing Center, on the Family Advisory Council, on the Preschool Advisory Committee -- this is a lot that you've served on -- and as a Certified SIC Bank Trustee. Ms. Horn also served on the Board of Directors of the Tennessee School Board Association as the East District Director in 2021 and 2022. Please join me once again as we express our appreciation to Ms. Horn for her service and leadership to the Knox County schools, our community, our students, and families. And Susan, we do have a couple folks who reached out to me that want to also celebrate you. Jason is here. I'm going to call him up. He wanted to say a few words. And I do believe he also has a proclamation for you.
In my five terms I've ever been in front of the Board, so it's good to be with you. Briefly, members, as we know, as elected officials, elected officials come and go. And in my ten years in the General Assembly, I've had friends leave, some are quickly forgotten, some leave legacy. And you have a board member retiring now that is leaving a legacy. Eight years of incredible servant leadership that has impacted families, that have -- she's represented children fantastically, she's represented parents, and she led during a global pandemic which separated Knox County schools from all their other metro areas. So for that reason, on behalf of the State of Tennessee, I'm here to read a proclamation that we've prepared in her honor. So if you'll bear with me for just a second. Whereas it is fitting that we should -- whereas it is fitting that we should specially recognize those estimable public servants who have dedicated themselves to improving the educational experiences of the children of Tennessee. Whereas Susan Horn is one such laudable individual who has served with probity -- you can look that up, I had two as well -- as a member of the Knox County Board of Education is now taking her retirement from this esteemed body. Ms. Horn was first elected to Knox County Board of Education in August of 2016, was re-elected to a second term in August of 2020, having served as Vice Chair from September 2018 through August of 2019, and completing two terms as Chair from September of 2019 through August of 2021. Whereas her time as Chair will always be remembered for how well she led Knox County schools through the global pandemic, advocating for students through her steadfast leadership that assured Knox County schools were the largest school system in the state that opened on schedule in the fall of 2020 while the two other -- while the two largest counties in our states kept schools closed. During her entire tenure at the Knox County Board of Education, Ms. Horn has distinguished herself as a servant leader of the highest order with an -- as an exceptional asset to her community. A lifelong resident of Knoxville, Susan Horn enjoys the love and support of her husband of 28 years, Brad, and her two daughters, Madeline and Reagan, and Brad and Reagan are both back here. Ms. Horn lent her time and talents to Farragut area schools. Let me say this quickly. Some people think, well, Susan has served for like 20 years. She's only served on the school board for eight, but she was a leader in the Farragut school system for many years before that. She has served as PTA President of the Farragut Primary School System, Farragut Primary School, the Farragut Intermediate School, member of the PTSO Board of Managers at both Farragut Middle School and Farragut High School, and a member of the Knox County Schools District Advisory and Council. She's graduated from University of Tennessee of Knoxville, where she earned a degree in marketing, and takes pride in her daughter's graduating from University of Tennessee in Chattanooga, which is Madeline, and the University of Tennessee Knoxville, which is Reagan, and Reagan is actually now in the Master's Program at UT. Whereas a faithful member of Christ Covenant, Ms. Horn has served as the Elementary Education Coordinator for more than 10 years and currently serves as the Women's Ministry. Whereas through her estimable service, Ms. Horn has demonstrated the utmost professionalism, ability, and integrity when in the respect and admiration of the citizens of Knox County. Therefore, I, Cameron Sexton, Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 113th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, at the request in conjunction with Representative Zachary, hereby proclaim that we honor Susan Horn. On this occasion of her retirement from the Knox County Board of Education, salute her professional expertise, her personal excellence, and extends to her our heartfelt wishes for a happy and fulfilling retirement and every continued success in the future. And let me just quickly say, Susan, we began our political careers together. Most people don't remember, you ran my first campaign, which we lost. You helped run my second campaign, which we did win, and then the Lord called you into service. And so, speaking on behalf of our family, most of you probably know Susan and I are related, we are extremely proud of you, thankful for the service that you have given to Knox County for eight years. You have been exceptional. You will be missed, and you have left a legacy that is going to be very difficult to follow. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I have this great frame proclamation, and if we could, is there somebody here to snap a picture? Could somebody do that? Look at this lady right here is going to do that.
We always love a good picture.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members.
Yeah. That was very sweet. And Susan, your friend and Vice Mayor of Farragut, Louise Pavlin, also reached out to me this week. She's unable to be here this evening because they do have -- she has her last meeting in Farragut, so she did send me a statement she wanted me to read to you. "I want to thank Susan Horn for her eight years of service on the Knox County School Board of Education representing the Farragut area. I was fortunate to meet Susan and call her my friend long before she and I decided to run for office representing the Farragut area. Previous to serving as an elected official, Susan had served the Farragut schools as a volunteer and had established the relationships with parents and staff that gave her a solid foundation to effectively advocate for our schools. Susan was well-prepared when she began her service. Earning a seat on the Knox County School Boards of Education comes with some resources: a computer, access to highly educated and professional staff, your own official email address. What it doesn't come with is a crystal ball. No one could have anticipated the difficulties that COVID would inflict on our community. Susan handled this difficult time with grace and a steadfast commitment to the well-being of our kids. I am beyond grateful that I had a good friend serving on the Board of Education while I served on Farragut's Board of Mayor and Alderman. Anytime I had questions or concerns about our schools, I could pick up the phone and know that we could have an honest conversation about steps forward. More importantly, I had a friend who could provide wise counsel as someone I could commiserate with. Being an elected official can be a lonely and stressful experience at times. Having friends who understand that is invaluable. Congratulations, Susan, on a job well done. You represented your community committably and admirably. Enjoy your retirement."
Thank you so much for reading that, and thank you, Representative Zachary. I always forget to say representative because I've known him since he was in high school. But thank you so much for this great honor. It has truly been an honor to serve my community in this role, and I wasn't emotional when I came in here, but thank you all, now I am. But I am grateful to have been able to serve. I'm grateful for Knox County schools and the commitment that you all have to make sure that we provide the best education that we can for students and families, and I'm excited about where the school system's going under Dr. Ryzer's leadership. And so I'll be cheering you all on from a distance and won't be far away, and just as I've been a sounding board for Louise all these years, now y'all can, now we can talk. Now y'all can call me if you want to. So thank you all, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for all your service. Mr. Watson, Ms. Owen, would you like to say anything? No, I'm not trying to put pressure on anybody, but I want to.
It would feel weird not to now, but it's okay. I felt like I shared my comments the other night. I've really loved serving on the Board over the last four years. As many of you all know, during this season, I've also started Olive Tree Early Learning Academy as a high-quality early education center. A lot of that is because of my work here and believing that we need to continue to push forward for our kids, and the earlier we do it, the better. So appreciate all that I've learned from each of you and appreciate the conversations where we could be able to push on each other and make each other stronger. You know, I want us to continue as a community to keep the main thing the main thing, which is our kids. There's a lot of noise out there, and we need to kind of wrestle that out of our minds. And Dr. Ryzer, we appreciate you and your team and the leadership, and I'm encouraged about where we're going, especially since I have a freshman, and a lot of what we do over the next four years is going to directly impact him, so thank you.
Thank you. I guess, do we want to take a picture? Picture time. I love starting meetings with recognitions and celebrations. With that, we will get into our regular agenda items. Ms. Cottney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I'll try not to cry because I'm really going to miss all three of you. Item 6, Consent Agenda.
Motion made by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7A, Approved Second Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-200. Policy Development and Adoption as Amended.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7B, Approved Second Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G-320. Tuition Assistance Program as Amended.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, Approved Tennessee Department of Education Fiscal Year 2025 Voluntary Pre-K Grant in the amount of $2,171,811.22, with required in-kind and matching funds of $1,210,895.99.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, Approved Grant Contract with the Tennessee Department of Human Services and Receipt of Grant Funding in the amount of $391,199 for the Pre-Employment Transition Services School-to-Work Program to Benefit Students with Disabilities for the term of October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2026.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, Approved Tennessee Department of Education IDEA Partnership for Systemic Change Grant in the amount of $100,000.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, Approved Donation in the Amount of $65,000 from the KCS Blended Preschool Foundation for Renovation of Playgrounds at Fort Sanders Educational Development Center.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, Approved CrossFit Foundation Grant in the Amount of $8,000 for Gibbs High School.
Sorry. Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Wright. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8F, Approved Mockingbird Foundation Grant in the Amount of $6,000 for Mount Olive Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Pike. Sorry about that. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, Approved Contract with Public Consulting Group for Provision of Special Education Data Management Technical Support, up to $130,000 for the term of September 1, 2024 through completion of the project.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Approved Contracts with Global Language Consultants and Spanish Language Solutions for Provision of Foreign Language Interpretation Services, up to $250,000 annually for the term of August 1, 2024 through July 31, 2025.
Motion by Ms. Pike, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, Approved Contract with Accenture LLP for Provision of Strategic Planning Services, up to $150,000 for the term of September 1, 2024 through the completion of the project.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, Approved Increase to Design Contract with Lewis Group Architects, up to $893,000 for redesign and rebidding of addition and renovations to Sturkey Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9E was withdrawn. 9F, Approved Proposal Contract for Psychoeducational Services with VEC LLC for Provision of School Psychologist Services for the 2024-2025 School Year at a Cost Up to $25,000 Using General Purpose Funds.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10A was withdrawn. 10B, Approved 2024 through 2025 Knox County Schools Differentiated Pay Plan.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10C, Approved Resolution to Suspend Procurement Regulations for Purchase of Vehicles Through August 31, 2025.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, Discussion and Possible Action on Early Release Days.
Oh, I guess we need a motion.
So would I have to motion something specific?
Yeah, we can motion for discussion.
Motion for discussion.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Pike, a second by Ms. Christie. Discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, I really appreciated the information and the data that we were presented with on Monday, and I really liked the options of either the two full days or the four half days. I would like to change it from what it currently is, but I'm amenable to what other board members and others would think an appropriate change would be.
Ms. Christie?
Yeah. I haven't really heard from a lot of people about this and don't really have very strong feelings about it. I did hear some concerns just at the school level with things having already been planned for this year and already on the calendars. And so I don't know as far as the timing goes of what that looks like. I mean, I'm sure our staff would work around it and do whatever they need to do because that's what they do, right? But I did just want to elevate those concerns because that's all I have heard as far as feedback goes.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've heard from quite a lot of folks about their feelings regarding the lack of planning time overall. They were hoping, after our discussion when we first brought this up, that there would be some time for teachers to have some additional planning and collaboration in planning with their peers, and those things don't seem to be happening. So I think that's part of the reason that we saw such a large swath of the respondents saying that they supported the days but with changes, because they would very much like to have changes. Having more time in meetings to talk about things that may not be very relevant to their classes isn't helpful, and they really need that time for planning that they are not getting. Thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have heard from a few people who are in favor of these days going away. However, I appreciate However, I appreciated the presentation from Monday night so that we could see the data. I'm thankful that a lot of people did respond so that we could see how a lot of people feel about it. So, I'm also, you know, interested to see what other folks have to say. I thought that it made sense to look at if we were going to look at getting rid of any of them the August and January days because they do provide such a disruption so early in the school year and then when we also have that day off in January. So, that just, I think, I was thinking ahead to, I can just hear it in January. Why are we out of school when we ju- you know, all of those conversations? Because we always hear those comments. So, I think just in a practical sense that that makes sense to adjust those. So, I was kind of interested in other board members' feelings on that. And also, I do know obviously that principals are planning these days and so, you know, what kind of hardship that is going to create for them. But it seemed like that might be a compromise to take those, to do that option. And so, anyway, I'm interested to see what other people have.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Wilson, I know the presentation the other night, I think, was very helpful and I appreciated all the data that was gathered. And I think it was telling that the least, the approach that people liked the least is the one that we currently have. I mean, and that was, you know, across all three sectors that were polled. Was the, I know it's not on the board agenda as a recommendation from the staff, but is there a recommendation from the staff? I mean, did you all look at that data and say, ooh, we really do need to change something because this polled so poorly in terms of how we currently do it?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think what I brought the other night, I would say, and I think Ms. Horn just used that word as well, I felt like it was a good compromise in terms of what we saw in the data, what honestly, anecdotally, we had heard over the last couple of years to recognize some opportunity for some structured individual planning time where teachers could have some of that as an add-back. I recognize what Ms. Horn labeled in the calendar in terms of those days that are really early in the semester. So, what we brought certainly was, I think, trying to be attentive to what we were hearing but then also be true to the spirit of where the original request we felt like came from and to honor the fact that, you know, our principals have already developed their plans for this year. And while it would be an adjustment to move to a four-half-day schedule, it's a minor adjustment in comparison to either canceling those or moving to like a full two-day schedule or something like that. Would we be fine with leaving it the way it is? Absolutely. I think we, again, feel like that was the original model developed which we have had about a year and a half of trying out. And so, we feel like there's probably still work to be done. As we talked about, you know, some of it is, the devil's in the details a bit in terms of like what each person experiences with that. I think when you think about the school planning and all that, we've tried to lean into support and helping in developing those PD plans through our regional teams and things like that. But certainly haven't gotten that perfect everywhere. But again, what we brought the other night, I think, I felt like was a good compromise that sort of honored lots of different perspectives on that.
Yeah. Thank you. I mean, as you all pointed out the other night, it was intended to be originally as a pilot and you would expect to study any pilot, which is what you all have done. And so, I think I might disagree with you in the sense of, I think it's fine to leave it. I don't think we should leave it to what it is when we claimed it was a pilot and we studied it and people are saying we should change it. I'm not going to arm wrestle you over it, but I mean, I just, I think we probably need to learn from the data on that. And so, I would be in favor of changing it to either of the two other options that we discussed. And Ms. Bike, I really, in my view, I think it's, I would look to your leadership to make a motion on that because it was the issue that you brought up. And I would be supportive of either one. I did indicate the other night that I thought the data was telling in the sense of, we're choosing the option that seemed to be least attractive to parents, although I know we can't, we haven't been able to dig into all the data to know, you know, was it the same parents answering all three of those questions the same way and all that? I get that. I do think either option is probably better from the data that we were given than what we currently are doing, so. One more thing. I do think it's important to note that the first one is coming up August 16th, but I think to take something away is easier than to say, we're adding something on the 16th and now you got to plan for it. So, yes, I think there will be some disruption to what principals and administrators and teachers have already kind of planned, but it's much easier to say, we're not going to do something then. Oh, now you got to figure out how to do something. So, I think they can, I think that's, you can adjust to that more quickly than adding something to.
Reverend Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to thank you for the data and the work that was going into presenting it. I think that parents, as was said, find the half-days difficult. I think that the half-days also could be a factor in absenteeism being a little bit higher on those days, as well as about a quarter of, I think, was staff favored the half-days and then another little bit more than a quarter said they favor them with changes. But there was still a great deal that didn't like the half-days. So, after looking at the data and listening to the initial outcries from parents, I think I support, I would support the four-days more than the half-days. However, it's not that much of a favoring, so.
Thank you. Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I realize we're looking at a difference in days and what I'm talking about is a little bit different from that, but I'd like the board just to consider for a minute the amount of time that it takes you to prepare a presentation. How long does it take you to prepare a one-hour presentation that is specific to the people in the room and differentiated for everyone in that room? Take that amount of time and our teachers are doing that six and a half hours a day. But state law requires that we give them 30 minutes of plan for that six and a half hours of instruction. Many of our teachers only have that 30 minutes per day. Any kind of plan time that we can give them is not a gift, it's absolutely necessary. So, please consider that.
Thank you. I heard from a couple of parents too who are in favor of the half-days just because it's a good compromise. And I think it's pretty coherent with what is, what we have now. So, I do think it's a good compromise. So, I would be in favor of the half-days. And I know as a parent myself, I've said it for a year and a half, like, because they're two different times, you know, noon and then 1:30. One day I'm going to forget one of my kids with those two different times. But, so I would be in favor of, and from the parents that I've heard, I would be in favor of changing it to the four-half-days as well. Ms. Bike? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dupler, I'm not sure if this is even possible, if we can vote on something that would affect a future calendar. But I think if we believe we should move toward two full-days, I think the motion could be to adjust the current calendar to four-half-days and then the next calendar would represent two full-days. I think, I think it is more of an adjustment to leap from what we currently have to two full-days this current year since the calendar's been set. But if we feel like we should move in that direction, I mean, can we state that now and make that a part of the calendar for the future?
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding that point, Mr. Watson, I think certainly it would be cleaner to have two full-days. I think my question would be whether it would be more advantageous to the staff to have four half-days. So, that would be my question on that.
I think that's, I mean, again, I'm not in everybody's heads, but I think that's probably why on the data we saw that that was the perspective of teachers and administrators over parents. Parents, by and large, wanted the two full days. And I think the reason why, I totally get it, is because you spread out that time over more days over the course of a year. So, you don't have to front-load all that in one day. I totally get it from that perspective. And I think I'm just, on this particular issue, just leaning toward the parents more, so.
I think I would prefer that we wait and not make that decision now. I think it would be better to let the staff go back to principals and talk through again. Okay, if this is the amount of time you have, you know, could you accomplish something better in two days? Because I think we need to make sure we're remembering that the point of it is to make sure that we are doing two things, providing plan time and what professional developers need, but also the end goal is to make sure we're affecting the students in a positive way. And we need to make sure that we're doing that. And so, it may be better to wait on that for the following school year until we have a little bit more information from what we're doing. Although, I totally agree that it needs to be done quite a lot earlier than August, 100%. But I think we could probably, you know, hopefully that determination could be made, you know, in the early January, February timeframe.
I have a question then. Where is the, if we are, so we're looking at this year and then next year, is this something where we can change this year and come back in January or February to see how this has worked and reassess then? And how disruptive would that be?
So, that's actually, Cory and I were side-barring about that very question. When you say disruptive...
Disruptive to your planning and the teacher's planning? To change something in January, February for the next calendar year?
I would say it's not. I mean, when you look at the plans that schools are developing right now, that is based in, you know, the goals that they're beginning to frame through their school improvement plans for this year and kind of what the work that they're lifting up, you know, is. And certainly in January, February, they would not be at a position to start doing that yet for the following year. So, summertime is when school leadership teams are meeting and developing their PD plans for the year and things like that. That would be the window of time that we would see them setting these plans in place. We would be well ahead of that in February, even March. We were talking about like around spring break or something like that. It could have been the right time for that.
Mr. Triplett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Wilson, does that affect, like, I know that based on the current schedule, we can count the days we're out for those early dismissals. We can count those as full day or part, whatever we can count. And then if we go to two full days, we just lose those. Like, what does that do to our number of days in school and weather days? And does that change anything?
Yeah. So, all of that will still be based on the same calculations. So, again, the current model of doing it for six days is a two-hour draw. So, three days equates to one of our stockpile days. We're using two of those over the whole year. Moving to a full-half-day continues if we do four of those to use the two. And then again, if we went to full days, it'd be the same thing, so. Yeah, full-half-days.
Yeah, full-half-days.
Sorry, I shouldn't be joking on the mic.
Ms. Bike.
I'll say that I agree with all of you in that looking at the data and seeing especially the hardships and that I think it was roughly 60% when you add those two together of hardships that it puts on families. I know that we have a lot of families that are, have a stay-at-home parent and, you know, that's kind of like one end of the spectrum where it's a little bit easier for them to potentially manage this stuff. And then on the other end, we have families that are in communities that have a lot of support and a lot of childcare options that are provided to them in some way or another. But then I think there's a big gap for a lot of families that we have and that's probably that 60% that two working parents, single parents, and those things that were this, like, where they, you know, have middle school, high school that don't have aftercare and things like that. And that was initially, I had heard, I've heard from a lot of parents and some teachers as well that I've been hearing about it for the last year and a half. And I think that that's really what brought this for me. And so, I really, I also agree that I like the four-half-days because it's, there's no confusion about what time is it that I'm supposed to be picking my kids up? Especially for me personally, I have an elementary school and a middle-schooler and those are four different times plus the regular times. And especially when you're working and you're doing other things, that's, that can be a lot to manage if you don't have someone that's specifically doing it for you. So, I think I would move to change our current calendar, 24, 25, to have four half-days and not change the continuing calendar but reassess later.
A second. Any more discussion? Yes, Ms. Triplett.
Just to clarify, this is the one that most families did not like. That is the only part of this whole thing that sort of throws me for a loop is we're looking at these decisions and they like the current model better. Was the current, I thought more families liked that one than the four-half?
Like the early release versus the changes in the half-days.
Madam Chair, members of the board, can you restate that question so I can try to answer it correctly?
Correct. So, my understanding is the least-liked option, including the early-release days that we currently are doing, the very least-liked option by families was the four-half-days. It was even lower than the early-release days or is the early-release days lower than that?
No. So, if you take all respondent categories, weight them equally and then look at their preferences, the least-liked option was the total elimination of early-release days. About 15.6% of our respondents selected that option. The second least favorable option would be our current model. The second most favorite option would be the four-half-days and the overall most favorite option, and again, that's an average across the board, would be the two full-days.
And that's, we're just talking about the families, right? School families?
No. So, if you're asking, that's across all respondent categories. If you look at just families, then you are correct. The two full-days is the most preferred option. Outside of a no opinion, then yes, that is the least-liked option. Something that I did want to kind of bring to the table because I know we had provided some additional breakdown on the family choice. One thing worth noting is that, again, we only were able to ask families to elevate one choice. So, if you take that two full-days off the table, and I'm not suggesting that we do, what we can't know based on the survey is what family's second choice would be.
Got you. Makes sense.
Ms. Lautner, I want to clarify because I don't think I heard the answer that I think Mr. Triplett was going for. When you just look at two or four half-days and only parents, is that liked less than our current model?
Yes. But what I will say again is that we're making a lot of assumptions that in terms of, that's everybody's first choice. So, when you take an option off the table, because this wasn't a ranked survey, what we can't assume is that everybody would prefer our current model over. Does that make sense? Once you pull one variable, yes, you kind of, you change the decision-making matrix then. I also have a question on that topic.
Okay. And then Sophia, then I'll let you.
Sorry. When you did the survey and you said half-day, did you clarify that the half-day was different than the early-release day or...? Okay. Yes. So, it was clear in the survey, you were either choosing an early-release day, which is its own independent releasing time, or a half-day that aligns to half-days already in the calendar. Okay. Yep.
Sophia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say from the perspective of a high school student, because I know it's different for middle and elementary kids because they have to be picked up. We, a lot of high school students do not like the early release and probably would prefer the half-days because a lot of us are student athletes. And it's kind of a lot to just have two hours off and then have to be at practice by 3:45. And if we had a full day off, it'd be like, we still have to go to practice, what? So, a half-day would be great for us. Because there was a lot of struggles with my friends and they're like, do we have practice today? Do we not have practice today? And even if it's not athletics, I was in a musical in the spring semester and our rehearsals still had to be at the same time. And it was just easier to not even leave school, but we had to leave school, of course. So, half-days would probably be in favor of the student body too. Thank you.
I appreciate that perspective. Thank you for that. Ms. Christie.
Just speaking to a little bit about what Ms. Elkin said, I will say that, and while I know it's not a large majority, or I'm going to assume it's not, I do know some parents that schedule doctor's appointments, counseling appointments, orthodontic appointments on those days. So, I do think that when you think in terms of the time it might take to get in with the health care provider, when you kind of take those days out altogether, that could create some hardships for those families as well. So, I do like the compromise. And Ms. Lautner, how, what percentage of parents responded? Do you know? I forgot my survey. Or how many parents responded?
That is a much easier question to answer. So, a little over 10,500 parents responded.
That's a good point. I am one of those parents that makes orthodontic appointments on those days as well. I know, okay, we have a motion. And then I second it. Yep. Well, I think there's some more discussion, so. Yep, well, I think there's some more discussion, so I guess we can go ahead and vote on, can you reread the motion, Ms. Coteen? I was gonna call you Ms. Terry.
Ms. Bike, you correct me if this is wrong, but I believe that she moved to change the 2024, 2025 school-year calendar to hold four one-half-days and to reassess the 2025, 2026 school calendar at a later date.
All right, so we'll go ahead and vote on that. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, oh, I apologize, item 10E, approved fiscal year 2025, general purpose budget adjustment in the amount of $7,840,000 to reflect a property tax adjustment.
Motion by Ms. Horne, a second by, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Ms. Christie? Any, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. Motion made by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All right, seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10F, approved fiscal year 2025, general purpose budget adjustment in the amount of $3,461,000 to reflect adjusted TISA amount and sales tax revenue to fund step placement on general salary schedule.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to talk about why I'm gonna vote against this. While I think it's great to have a salary increase, I don't think that's what this is. This is moving everyone to a step that is not the step that they are determined to be at their market value. So if we have money for raises, the money for raises should go into the scale, it should go into the steps where they are supposed to be. When we just raise a bunch of people to a new, a new step and put them on what is now could be the wrong step, could be the right step, it depends, because they've not all been sorted out yet, we're gonna create a disparity at some point between people who have worked a certain number of years and people who are here right now and getting this step. It would be much more sensical, if we want to give a raise, to put that raise in the scale, so that if you have, let's say you are at step two, step two is $10 an hour, raise that $10 an hour to $10.50 instead of kicking them up to another step, that is not the correct step. So I think this, this plan, while well-intentioned, I, I feel like it is a Band-Aid to sort of get folks to, to let go of the fact that they may be on the wrong step, instead of just giving a salary increase. I would much rather see this money put with fidelity into the steps, instead of willy-nilly moving people's steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, thanks for using one of my favorite phrases, willy-nilly, that's a good one. Ms. Hemelgaard, my understanding of this is that we are shifting methodology by making the general, the methodology in which we add folks to the general salary schedule the same in terms of step placement as the teacher schedule. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, yes. When our employees on the general scale were transitioned over, they were not granted that plus-one as our employees on the CERT-1 and CERT-2 scales were, so this would be granting them that plus-one.
That was my understanding, and that's why I made the motion to approve it, in the sense of, I think it makes sense to apply the same methodology, and from what I heard from a lot of folks, that's where the confusion was, especially for folks who were on the general scale, not understanding that, not making that clear. So again, I appreciate the work to consider that as a possibility and also looking for the funds to do it. I don't think it's, I don't, I also don't think it's a Band-Aid in the sense of, this is the first time we're moving to this scale, and I think it's an adjustment of methodology that then will then, will be a moot point moving forward, because after this year, nobody will be placed on a scale based on this current methodology, because we will be using it for everybody moving forward. Is that fair to say?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so now I'm confused, thank you, because I've heard from employees who are on this scale, who say they have been placed at the correct step, which is last year's step and one more. So if we have already placed employees at last year's step and one more, then we have a communication problem again, because they are gonna think they are gonna be one more again. So I think we need to be very, very clear about exactly what we're doing. Having still not actually seen everything, I, I don't really understand how we can say exactly what we're doing here, because we still have this huge number of people who have not been corrected, and are they going to understand what step they're on? I mean, they don't now, so is this going to make it worse? Is this gonna confuse things even more? Would it make more sense to hold this a month until all of the corrections have been done and then do whatever needs to be done? Because I agree and I understand that everyone should have the same additional step. That's what we told them they were gonna get, that's what they should get. But some people are telling me they've already been given that. So if they've already been given that, are they getting one more, or are they getting the one they've already gotten? And have we communicated that to them? How will we communicate that?
Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, so the, the additional step has not been granted to employees on the general scale yet, and our payroll, I'll, I'll come back to that in just a second, because the employees were slotted in two different ways on the general scale. But as far as the process, our payroll and HR departments are still processing payroll for August and working through corrections, the final corrections and the final inquiries to the Google form. So the correct placement prior to the plus-one would be instituted first and then the plus-one. But in, in response to the first part, as, as you remember, employees were slotted on the general scale in two different ways, because we're not taking anyone, we're not having anyone paid less this coming year than they were last year, so they could have been slotted based on years in the position or their current salary. So that's where there, there may be, that, the, the step question as to, that you brought up, they may be on a different step than exact number of years in the position, that's where that could happen.
Mr. Watson, did you want to respond? Ms. Owen, and then I'll go to Ms. Horne.
Well, not a response, but just, I think it's a point of further clarification. So I asked this on the other night, on Monday night, and I just want to verify that I heard the answer correctly. So if we do this, this won't necessarily affect every individual person, but it will be available to every position within the general salary schedule, correct? And so, and the reason I'm stating that, and the reason why I think you're doing it, is because, as you stated, originally, there could be one of two ways that you would be put on that schedule, and by doing this, we're now saying, well, no, there's only one way. And so if you weren't affected by that one way originally, then you will be now, and it will be in your favor, correct? Because I know there was a chart that Mr., that Ron put up, that Mr. McPherson put up that showed the, or not Mr. McPherson, Scott put up, Mr. Bolton, the other guy, that Mr. Bolton put up, and it was very good. And he had about six examples that showed in certain positions, not by individuals, but certain positions, how much this might affect from a percentage standpoint, right?
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, yes. So the, obviously if employees are topped out on the general scale at step 20, this would, there would not be an additional step there, and then employees that were hired after the transition, so new to the district on these salary schedules, it would not apply to them, but yes, all, all employee categories on the general scale.
All right, seeing there's no more discussion on this side, and we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Mr. Triplett, on to public forum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shamari Johnson. Shamari, if you will state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes to speak. Mr. Brown, if you want to help him lower that.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
May have to pull it down just a tad.
Make accommodations for everybody.
You're good. You'll state your name and county of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Shamari Amarachi Johnson.
Shamari Amarachi, what does Amarachi mean?
Hmm, I don't know.
You don't remember your middle name? Okay, here we go. Now, I'm gonna help Shamari do this for y'all. We have pictures. Yeah, I'm, I've gotten old, just so y'all know. Y'all might have to lean me down. Okay, Shamari, who's this picture up?
Me and Lieutenant Governor.
This Lieutenant Governor Randy. I took Shamari to go meet him. We were, I was watching TV, he was playing Roblox, and he said, Dad, I wanna go meet him. Now normally, when I go to functions like that, y'all, you, you feel like you're raising in a bunch of milk. Everybody ate up all the bran, but I told him I would go there and check it out. Now, when we went there, why did you want to see Mr. Lee?
Because he said he helps families.
So when you went up there, what did, what did Mr. Randy do?
He took me by the hand and led me to him.
And you got to meet, who is this?
Governor Lee.
That is Governor Lee. They were laughing, the guy behind the jaws, he laughing, he was like, you're the only person that ever got the governor down on his knees. That's why they're laughing in the background about it. And, do you know who this is?
The sheriff.
Sheriff Spangler got down to talk to him, because he has questions and things. This, this is Shamari. Now, here's the other one. He even remembered the drink that she had. Who is that?
Senator Becky Duncan.
Becky Duncan, she had a drink, and I said, how did you know what drink she had? He said, I saw it in her cup, and he named it. So now, all the time that we were there, what did they keep asking me?
Why, I wasn't looking them in the eye?
I kept wondering why he wouldn't look anybody in the eye. Everybody kept noticing, that's why you're all seeing the venue, trying to look. So, oh, before I forget, I have to get memory for myself. State trooper, you met a state trooper, what did, what did he tell you?
He said he can retire if I become one.
He wanted to become a trooper. I said, you going ahead, so we can all retire. So what had happened was, when we got in the vehicle, I had asked Shamari, why didn't you look anybody in the eye? I thought it was the sun. And what did you tell me?
I thought none, none of them liked you, because Knox County Schools doesn't.
I wanted y'all to hear that. That blew me out of the water. I make sure that my children do not judge everybody because of a few or because of gossip. That way, they don't grow up prejudiced, racist, bigoted, angry. But this is why I wanted him to come, for y'all to hear what we do affects them. Now, what do you want to say? You said Shamari what? Amarachi.
Amarachi out.
Amarachi out, so he's done. There you go, sit down. Good job, buddy.
Charlisse?
Yes.
Are you speaking as well?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Thank you for saying my name right. I've never really heard my name on this Mr. John, but he said it right, wow, that's good.
If you will state your name and county of residence, and you'll also have three minutes.
I like this, I don't know who did this, man. Okay, my name is Charlisse Johnson. Today is about legacy. Mrs. Horne, you and I believe that the Holy Spirit indwells in this people and that all aspects of our life fall under His lordship. Scripture says that we are supposed to have nothing to do with the deeds of darkness, but rather expose them. And often I've wondered, did you want to deal with the deeds of darkness as they spread around us? Or did you ask the Father, what is this member in the household of faith talking about? Did you count the cost, act accordingly, or did you profit Knox County but yet lose your soul? Now, I agree with you on some things about books. However, Black Americans should not have allowed white liberals to attach the recognition of our humanity to their agendas. But Moms of Liberty, they don't want to speak about the uncomfortable truth about our history and the sexual violence that happened during slavery and also during the civil rights era, which are my parents' generation. To have true liberty, we need to speak the truth in love. I don't hear love. Maybe the Moms of Bondage is more fitting. Mrs. Bike, now I'll address you at a later time, because I don't see where Black lives truly matter in your democratic platform. Daniel Watson, you were going to speak to Mrs. Sayers about the family and somebody else. When you didn't do that, to me, that showed white solidarity with racism. I, you adopted Black children, but I'm the father of Black children by culture, by history, by genetics, by lineage. Authentic Black dads do not have that white-out option. On social media, you spoke a lot about George Floyd, but then along with the superintendent at that time, Board Administration, Lawless Department, Security, you participated, and some of y'all did, too, in the putting the knees on the necks of melanated children in Knox County Schools. Extreme makeover, they rebuilt your home, but I'm gonna give you a finishing touch. Every time you walked through those doors, you were silent when the evil of racism came to my family. I had four kids at high school, and you were complicit with others. You could have at least picked up the trash that some did not want to pick up. An extreme racial makeover is needed in all of Knox County Schools, and every one of you and the Security Department are leaving legacies. I'm Mr. Johnson, father and dad of eight, and I approve this message. Thank y'all.
Candace Banister? Candace, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Candace Banister, Knox County resident. Bullying is defined as unwanted aggressive behavior that involves a real or perceived power imbalance. The behavior is repeated or has the potential to be repeated over time. The imbalance of power involves the use of fiscal strength and access to embarrassing information or popularity to control or harm others. I was 59 years old and in this room before it ever happened to me. Many of you were here and did not attempt to stop it, although maybe you didn't see it the way I felt it. An audience member beside me clapped three times in agreement with something a board member said, and an officer Candace came to stand near them, staying there even after the person said to the officer, I'm sorry, I won't do it again. This may seem insignificant, but this is actually taught as a strategy for how to deal with disruptive students in a class. Someone makes a noise, the teacher walks close to the person, the noise stops, the teacher carries on. It is very effective, and the teacher doesn't even have to say a word. Is it bullying? It doesn't have to be, but context matters. Power and patterns matter. I felt my heart of the Board took a break through the 15-minute break for the next 20 minutes of the Board meeting and even through public forum. The audience member's apology should have been enough to end it, but instead, the officer stayed in that place for an extended amount of time. It was in that time after the break that I began to really feel uncomfortable, like I'd done something wrong, like I wasn't welcome here, like I was a bad person, I wasn't worthy. I followed my former colleagues sitting behind me, who could see I was being watched, or the board members in front of me, who might think, I don't know how to act in a meeting. The longer it went, the more my heart sped up. And it was in this time that I made the connection to the way our 16-year-old son was treated by administration on his first day back to school after a long-term suspension. On Will's first day back, I rushed home from school like I had a kindergartner who attended school for the first time. I asked about his day, and he said, it went okay, it was pretty good, but then his head dropped. He said that he had a visitor in two of his classes who stood over him for 10 to 15 minutes without saying anything. He said it was his executive administrator. Will said it made him feel embarrassed and made him feel bad, made him feel not welcome at his school. I encouraged him to keep his head down, stay in the middle of his lane, not to draw attention to himself, and that maybe the administrator would leave him alone. Every day that week, I checked in with Will. On Thursday, he said this administrator had come to two of his, two of his other classes. Proximity can be a... And four weeks to the day that Will returned to school, he took his life. He survived being at home for a long-term suspension. What he did not survive was returning to a school to be bullied by his administrator. Being rewarded by being appointed to a prominent leadership position is enabling bullying behavior. It is the exact opposite of not tolerating bullying behavior. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
With that, we are adjourned.